Now convene this August first meeting of the Centerville Town Council will stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
All right, the first thing on our agenda is agenda review. If anyone has any additions or changes to the agenda, now would be the right time to make those. Okay. Seeing none, in your packets, you have the minutes from the July 18th, 2024 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the July 18th Town Council minutes.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, awesome. Now we have a citizens forum. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council? Okay. Then we have an appearance from Heather Tenelli from Queen Anne's County Economic and Tourism Development. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, come on up. Thank you so much for having me today, and I will be brief, but I just wanted to give you a chance to ask questions if you had any, and also to give you some background on the Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund grant that was awarded to the town of Centerville. A very brief background, that was a $10 million worth of funding from our prior governor, Governor Larry Hogan, to rural communities. And to make a long story short, Queen Anne's County was awarded $2.9 million. During that process, each county had the ability to go about what types of projects they funded individually. In Queen Anne's County, our commissioners decided to reach out to our municipalities as well as economic development projects that they thought might be worthy. They set up an independent council that reviewed all of those projects. We have $5.8 million in projects that were submitted, and obviously, we can only do 2.9 million, and we did. And several, there were three municipalities that received funding, Centerville being one. The town of Churchill received $10,000 for a cellphone tower, and Southersville received $100,000, and that project's still in process for economic development, as well as to get their sustainable communities reallocated and sit back up, and that's in process. So we had 11 projects. All of those will be completed on time. The largest one was 1.2 million dollars for the 4-H Park renovations that have been complete, and they are now going to be doing some additional projects. All the funding had to be spent by the end of November, and the projects that were funded for, or approved for the town of Centerville were related to the wastewater upgrades, and there were three pieces to that. The disinfectant, I'll have to read these because I am not an expert in wastewater treatment. A UV disinfectant or disinfection process for 400,000, laboratory and de-watering building for 200,000, and influence screening for 175. That came up to 775, and the town was originally awarded 500,000. And we were working with your previous administration on that, but due to timing and delays in getting approvals and those sort of things, and changes in your staffing, that was not able to move forward. We worked with Carolyn on how the monies could be utilized, and we had to go to the Department of Commerce, as well as Upper Shore Regional Council and our commissioners, and we were able to get an extension on the funding for the laboratory and de-watering building, which was set at 200,000. And Carolyn was able to work through your engineering department, as well as, I guess, others that needed to make sure that that could be done within the timing. The Department of Commerce really didn't want to see the projects be extended, but we all know with any kind of major projects, there's going to be extensions. So they were gracious enough to offer those extensions, and I did offer Carolyn and your staff anything that we can do to help support, because now that, you know, the funding will be reduced, if there's anything we can do to support you in your efforts to fund that complete project, we'll do whatever we can. But I'm sure you've turned over every rock as well, and we'll continue to do so, and we're just here to support you. But I wanted you to know that we did do what we could in order to continue the 500, but based on the timing, we had to reduce it in order to be able to, to be able to keep some of it. And the town of Centerville did receive the most funding out of all of the towns within the county from this 2.9. I try to keep that short, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, it was a very thorough explanation.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Yes.
Any wisdom, though, coming down the pike from your bleacher seat? You know, money's tighter and tighter, but as you look out over the next five to 10 years, any sense that you have with state and federal agencies, like what's drying up, so to speak, versus what might be looking more favorable than we thought? Just anything at all?
I would say I don't envision, I started November 2019, right before the pandemic, and boy, we've seen a lot of funding come through our doors. I believe this is the last pot that we will administer directly, because there's other agencies that are going to do it better than my six-person team would do. DHCD tends to have a lot of funding coming through their doors. A lot of that is focused on housing and community development. The great thing for Centerville is you have a strong, sustainable communities plan, and every year I see that you are applying for funding for your facade improvement, the project restore, so I feel like you're primed and have done the things you'd need to do in order to take advantage of some of those funding opportunities.
Thank you.
But those are the ones that I think that the town would be, see the most benefit from.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have some old business. It's the on-call policy, resolution 152024. Crystal?
Good evening. We have before you the on-call policy, the draft policy that was presented during the last Town Council meeting, and there was a request to have it just re-vetted by the employment law attorney to ensure that there was no issues of compliance with regards to the overtime rules. I did speak with Kevin, and he did review the policy, with the exception of, you know, just a grammatical, or more like a word change in "see," where it's just, instead of impaired, is now impairs. He didn't feel that there was any issue with compliance, or with non-compliance as it relates to FLSA law. But I didn't know if anyone had any questions or any comments.
You referenced Kevin, who is that, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. So he is the employment law attorney that works for Legit, and we use him because we're members of Legit.
He provided us the stellar guidance previously, that we should be concerned about the salary of our staff spouses.
I was hoping for the full name to go into record.
Kevin, his name is Kevin Karpinski. So he is the employment law attorney and hotline consultant for all of the Legit members.
So I asked Carolyn to provide me the communication with him, and she did. It basically just says that you had a telephone call, and his guidance is based only on that call. And so, like, I feel like when we send something back, and we say we need legal guidance on it, then I want it to come back to me with legal guidance, and I don't have that.
Opinion letter or something?
Yeah, something. Like, I don't have it, like, you're sitting here saying it's good.
To include it in the agenda packet?
Yeah, I just think if we send something back, because we need a lawyer to weigh in, then let's get the lawyer's way in. And the email doesn't actually provide any legal guidance. It says you have to check and see if he can give you more legal guidance.
That's their standard, like, hotline call response.
I'll admit that I have concerns about his ability to provide good guidance after the last letter we got from him. So I'm struggling with this one, because I still think it's not compliant, but he's an employment law attorney and I'm not. But I just, I know the rule doesn't allow you to make people be a certain distance from their job, and I don't see how time doesn't equal distance. I'm just, I'm struggling with this still. But I'm just one person, so whatever you guys want to do.
I too would like to see an opinion letter or some formal documentation. Maybe someone in your shop would know or not.
Yeah, we could give, we could, I mean, I did look at it a while ago. I know then, when Ashley brought up at the last meeting your concerns, I didn't do anything after that.
Yeah.
So I could look at it again with those concerns. I did send Crystal some of my comments before, some changes, and I think she incorporated those.
Yeah, my only concern is that I don't believe you can require someone, if they're required to be a certain distance from their work site, that you have, you can't pay them this way? And we say they have to be able to get here within 60 minutes, and maybe that's good enough, but to me, time equals distance, like, at some point, time equals distance.
And I think...
And I like, I hate to delay this again, because I want people to get paid for their on-call time.
But if I could echo what you're saying, and I think all of us, I believe all of us feel this way, this is an area where, when we all think about the organizations we've worked for, the on-call thing is something that gets so many organizations in trouble. And so, having that paper trail, I think legally would be helpful. And then I just have a quick question on "see" under two procedures. It's, the second sentence, of course, says that for any reason, an on-call employee becomes unavailable to work, while in an on-call status, he or she shall notify his or her supervisor. The preceding sentence, of course, is about they can't consume any substance. Just double-checking, what's implied there is that if you become impaired and you're on-call, you're supposed to call your supervisor. Is that kind of part of that second sentence there? If for any reason they become unavailable, which would include becoming impaired? I just want to understand, is that what you're also thinking there?
Yes. So if that person or that employee is, feels that they're going to be impaired while performing their duties, then they would need to contact their supervisor if they're unable to report to work because of that concern.
Thank you.
But I can certainly get additional clarification.
Then that's fine. I just was sort of just walking through it, the assumption there.
Yeah, and so, my, just quick Google search on the FSLA new rules. The test is whether they are engaged to wait or waiting to be engaged. And so, if they're engaged to wait, it means we're controlling their conduct or their location. If an employee's freedom is constrained, they might need to be compensated for the time. For example, if they're required to carry a cellphone and be within a certain distance of the workplace, they may need to be paid for that time. Let's just make super sure.
Yes. And that was a discussion, and absolutely, I'll make sure that we get some documentation from the attorney. I can look, do you just only want me to refer to Sharon now, or do you want me to continue with both and get both documentation, or both parties to document their recommendations? As we did have the discussion regarding the active and inactive on-call time, and whether or not they're considered active, based on our discussions and his review of the policy, so I always email the policy, but because it's a hotline call, we call it in to discuss it.
Yeah.
And then we follow up with the email and the documentation, but I can certainly ask for a more thorough documented response.
Let's just go with your office first.
Sure.
Okay. We'll go from there, if that's okay with everyone.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we approve resolution 15-2024 on-call policy for a trial, a 60-day period, pending legal review, and field validation.
I'll second that.
All right, we're gonna, we'll do a roll call. Councilmember Beecham?
Yes.
Council Vice President Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's a good, good solution.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. No, thank you. I really appreciate your work on it.
Yeah, not a problem.
All right. Reports of boards and commissions, the Maryland Municipal League.
Nothing significant to report this evening.
Okay, council of governments.
No report.
Right, park advisory board, they meet next week. Planning Commission.
Let's see, they haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, so, but they meet again with a work session on Wednesday, August 7th.
Okay. Reports of department heads, town manager.
One question I have for the council, just because of the timing of our meetings, timing of planning commission meetings. So the planning commission also meets the third Wednesday for their regular meeting, which they'll hear the, or they'll read the annexation resolution and the zoning ordinances. I'm sorry.
With the Providence Forum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was going in a different direction. The moratorium and the cannabis, they'll be hearing as well. So I wanted to make sure, does the council want to have a public hearing on those at your September 19th meeting? Because the council won't meet again before we have to put in an advertisement for that meeting, so August, the...
Got it.
Planning Commission will give a recommendation.
So they'll meet August 14th, or whatever, the 21st?
21st. 21st, yeah.
21st, yeah.
And then you, the council meets on the 5th. Obviously, we have public hearings for the annexation and all that, but August 27th is the date we have to submit the ad to meet the deadlines.
For the cannabis and the moratorium.
Right. Or is there, Sharon, is there additional hearing advertisements for the moratorium?
Just like another regular zoning ordinance text, which is once a week for two weeks, 15 days before that.
Is there a reason we would need to rush it, or could we just do it the 19th?
The public hearing?
Yeah. Just because we already have annexation on the 5th?
No, I wasn't trying to do it on the 5th.
Oh, okay.
I was trying to do it on the 19th.
Sounded like you wanted to have a real bang-up time on the 5th.
I don't think we can meet advertisement requirements before September 5th.
Okay.
Just because of the timing of meetings, I...
So the advertisement has to go in before Planning Commission reviews it? Is that what you're trying to say?
It'll, it will go, and it'll go two weeks. I got to make sure that, so it'll go in on the, oh, I'm, just, oh, okay. So it will go, we'll submit on the 20th and the 27th, so the 23rd and the 30th of August. So it'll be submitted before the Planning Commission meets, but advertised after, which I typically don't like to do, but it, it, you guys don't, or the council doesn't necessarily have to consider either. I mean, but you'll, you'll get the, we'll have a second reading on the 5th, which you'll know about the Planning Commission's recommendation, and then public hearing on the 19th.
I would say advertise.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right.
If something hiccups, we can pull the second advertising and readdress.
Okay, okay. Just a couple other little things, brambles, unless Jeff was going to say this under the town table.
Steel and its thunder.
What'd you say?
You can.
Okay. Brambles completed the work on 2/13 in front of Centerville Police Department on Tuesday. I wanted to remind everyone that Monday is the deadline to submit paperwork for the October 7th election. 4:00 PM is the deadline. Our 105 North Liberty Street, our staff power-washed that building this week. It looks really good. I actually walked past and was like, can you work in the office so I can power-watch? I love to power-watch. But, so it looks really nice over there, and the roof that the council approved in the budget, they're starting on getting all that straight, so I won't take Chief's thunder because I wasn't sure if he was going to be here or not, so I'll let him talk about that.
He seems unsure of what he's going to talk about.
Right. And National Night Out, I was going to say. Was that?
Okay.
You've got it, okay. And then to follow up on Heather's, with the laboratory building, which is what we were funded for, the renovations to that through the Rural Maryland grant, we have met, engineers have met, our DPW staff have met, and we're working on plans so that we can meet that deadline to get those renovations done with the grant money. So that's all I have.
As we learned with some of the other grants that come our way, federal grants, there's different definitions for spending it. So maybe there's some subtleties of where we can encumber it, but not write the check yet, or something that will qualify as spend.
We tried with this certain one. And we tried to, can we move it to, because it was like, economic development, infrastructure was included in that, so we even said, can we move it over for streets? Like, you know, we have some federal earmarked money for streets, we can help with the infra... No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, chief?
Good evening, everyone. If I could draw your attention to the police department's July 2024 department overview sheet, should be in your packet. And I do apologize for it being a little late, we're trying to wrap up the data points, since this meeting is obviously on August 1st.
Oh, did we get one?
If you look at the right side in the columns where it says June 2024 versus the July 2024, the numbers in July are less, obviously. However, that doesn't come with less man-hours. We had received many incidents that required investigative time, so it took officers off the road from maybe the traffic enforcement portion, and so if you notice, the numbers are down, that's why. We had a few felonious crimes in which our office investigated and worked diligently to obtain search warrants, arrest warrants, et cetera. And as you'll notice, down in the complaints and incidents section, you'll see that there were six search and seizure warrants that were served, and they were all applied for, executed, and served. Now, that included not just for residents, it was included with DNA, communication devices, et cetera. Oh, am I not, my apologies. The stickler's on this microphone. So we did have very many investigative man-hours for the month of July. And under the special assignments portion, if I could direct your attention there, just to clarify what those items are, the first item being Lexipol training. So we were fortunate enough for the council to approve our Lexipol policy software, which had already been implemented, and we're already working on changing our policies and procedures for the department. That's going rather smoothly and efficiently, more so than we expected. So they said it could be a six-month total turnaround before we're completed, and then now they're saying it's probably going to be closer to four months when we can implement our final policies. So that is the training that itself and our command staff attend every week, once a week. We work with Lexipol directly and their implementation staff. The CPD all-hand staff meeting and training, so what we've decided to do is, it used to be once a year, we would hold a staff meeting with all of our officers and our administrative staff. I've changed that to twice a year, because I think meeting with our staff is important, so that way we make sure we're all on the same page, we can update them on our plans, future plans, and they can hear directly from us that we're all in the same room and we're on the same page. So that's what that is. We had that meeting in July, and we usually have another one closer to November, December. The social media conference was something that Madam Town Manager had mentioned, I think the last Town Council meeting we attended. It was very good training, a lot of good bullet points that we picked up concerning our social media and news conference that we could possibly have in the future. The Armor School, we sent two officers there to perform maintenance, any of our weapon systems within our agency, handguns, rifles, any less lethal weaponry, so they're certified to do so. And the Symphony Village had a Fourth of July parade, which we were honored to attend. It was very interesting.
It's a blast.
It is, it is a blast. It's definitely interesting. So we were proud to be a part of that, had a good time out there as well. Task Force Advisory Board meeting, that is usually a command staff item. We meet with heads of other local law enforcement agencies, along with the task force heads, to discuss current trends with narcotics and things that we may be facing in our county, and we're proud to report back that they're doing very well. We've conducted a lot of investigations, and I was told that most of them did not concern Centerville, because they have told me that the drug trends were actually down around our area, so we want to continue to keep up our enforcement efforts. So that was, that was a good meeting. Fields Training Officer School, we sent Officer Ford to this. Ultimately, it gives him the ability to field train any of our local, or our... or our certified law enforcement officers that we bring in, whether they're lateral from another agency or new from the police academy. And defensive tax training, defensive tactics training in the Eastern Shore Police Academy. Lieutenant Laramore is only one of maybe 12 in the whole state of Maryland that's certified to conduct that. And he goes down to the Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy to help train new recruits in defensive tactics. So he attended that in the month of July as well. And last, but certainly not least, as we touched on just a few minutes ago, is just a reminder for the council and those that are listening, that Tuesday, August 6, between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, we have our annual National Night Out event on Lawyers Row, sponsored by the Centerville Police Department. We have live music, some really good food, some really good food items, different than we've had before. We have face painting for the kids, kid-friendly events, games. They're gonna have balloon animals this year. The Moon Bounce was always a hit, so we kept that along with arcade games. Thank you very much. And the Cone of Ice will be there as well. So I'm looking forward to a big turnout, and please, if you have time, come see us.
Awesome. On the, the 10 canine scans, are those in town, or is that inclusive of when we lend?
That's inclusive of all of his scans, whether it be for Queen and Sheriff, Maryland State Police, or us.
Okay, cool.
I can break it down if you'd like for just what is specific to our town.
And Chief, something that I think is really positive to draw attention to, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I'm pretty sure we've gone a year with still having zero criminal juvenile arrests. Does that sound right? I've been watching that number because it just shocks me that it continues to be zero.
I'm not sure. I don't know, zero for, maybe for 2024. You could be correct on that. I'll have to get the data for you. Yes.
That's just, I don't know many municipalities that can boast that number. So either we have really good kids, or they're really good at hiding their crimes.
Combination.
A little both.
All right. Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other department heads you want to have?
Not unless, Gabe, Gabe, do you have anything?
We had a great meeting with the town of Cambridge in regards to our intern program. They've been very gracious, gracious in, you know, helping us with developing it. We should have, we've gotten in contact with a grant that is probably going to be able to subsidize the interns. So it's just moving forward, and we look forward to having it all ready for next summer.
Awesome. I have an idea for the interns. I think they can secret shop at town businesses and figure out who's not charging for bags.
I knew that.
All right, anything else, town staff? Okay, we'll enter our second citizens forum. Any citizens wish to address the council? All right, Council Roundtable, Councilmember Keel.
Well, I was, I came up Saturday for the tree when they removed the tree, and I got a couple pieces of the timber. I also gave a piece to Mary Margaret.
Oh, nice.
She was very appreciative. So it was just a little piece. You're gonna get one little piece.
Awesome.
Yeah, so that's all I have.
Cool.
Well done, well done.
You're here.
Councilmember Beecham?
So consistent with your request, I'm working with HR and finance to play with the, the medical expense, trying to find out how we can
Awesome.
achieve your goals on that.
Awesome. Look forward to hearing about it. Anything else? Councilmember Worth?
Yeah, one of the things we should be working on during the moratorium or working on anyway is the capacity management plan and sewer allocation policy. I don't know, is staff gonna work that? Or, I mean, I could work something or?
We, yes, staff has talked about that. And we need, we wanted, we need to compare because I think the comp plan also made some suggestions for it. So we were, need to compare the two, make some changes. Unless the council wants to review and provide suggestions, we can include those in other changes.
Yeah, I'm interested in.
Okay, I can, I can send it. We can send that to you. All right.
Okay.
And then, one more thing. I know, I know it's hot outside, but something that, I guess we, we had been talking about sidewalks by email, but it reminded me of snow removal. I know it's kind of hot to be worried about that, but.
104 degrees today.
Since it, I know, it takes a while to get anything passed, you know? It might, it'd be time to start now. But I was surprised to learn that it only, there's a, there's only a requirement for commercial properties remove snow within 24 hours. There's no requirement for residential property owners to do so. Now, you know, I live on a main street, and I think it would be a good idea for those sidewalks to be clear, the ones on state roads at least. Okay. So I think I would, I would like to amend or work towards amending that ordinance to require snow removal within 24 hours on, on, well, really all properties.
Yeah, I think all.
On all sidewalks that are on state highways. Okay, because those are the, I mean, there are plenty of people who walk to work. I mean,
Yeah.
And I see them every day, you know? And when it's snow out and it's, if you don't remove snow, it becomes ice. Okay? And then you're trying to walk in a street on a busy road. It's not, it's not appropriate. And I was also thinking maybe Kidwell should be added to the list.
I would say all.
I would say all.
And I certainly hope.
I thought it was already the law.
Me, too. I certainly hope Harry Kaiser's not watching, as I told him forever. It absolutely was the law. Get out there and shovel that snow.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should do all of them.
Yeah, I'd say all.
And we're, we're planning on September 19. We're, we're trying not to add anything else to the September 5 meeting because it's pretty packed. Bringing a draft ordinance on some other sidewalk changes anyway, so we can include that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And I, I always thought it was the law.
I, I did, too, until I looked it up. Yeah.
I think Harry's watching.
Right.
I know. Waiting for my phone to buzz. All right. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Council Vice President Johnson?
So as everyone up here has heard, and probably most of the staff by now, I have elected not to run again. There's some healthcare considerations involved. It's not been a pleasurable decision. I've really enjoyed sitting up here on the dais with this group and doing the people's work, rolling up our sleeves together. I draw attention to that more to just encourage anybody out there that has thought about serving on the council to take heed the date that was given, 4:00 PM August 7.
Fifth Monday.
Make sure I get that right, this coming Monday. So if you are interested by the town hall, there is some paperwork to complete. And I would hate for somebody to think they just have to go in and sign one thing with not much time left. So take advantage of that opportunity. And then the last thing, I just wanted to have endorsement from the council before I do this. I wanted to shoot an email to Kip and Gary in DPW and copy the organizer for the Hometown Hearers Banner Project, Leah Hall. And then she has a partner in crime now, Chad Baker, who's a Marine Corps veteran, part of the Order of the Purple Heart, who's gotten involved and really wants to champion what we've decided to do here in Centerville. Just to get them connected and talking about what the options are if we can't get Verizon with the polls that, like Dan's had, or excuse me, Councilman Worth, had suggested. And just to make sure that we know what the options are, she's got a number that people have sent checks in, and she's literally hoping and praying that we're not running out of potential polls. So just if everybody's okay with that. Awesome. Didn't want to step on any toes with the staff, and I'll copy you on that, Carolyn.
And I reached out to Delmarva, to their government relations people, and I just sent a follow-up email to, to him.
It's a mess. Delmarva is a mess right now. You can't, nobody, there's nobody to answer any questions. You can't, it's ridiculous. Like, nobody wants to say, yeah, we, yeah, you can do it, no, you can't. Like I said, even my guy said that. He was, I can't get you an answer.
So one of the organizers has a brother that works at a high level at Delmarva Power and came back and said, yeah, I, I think the answer is no. And he can't get his brother to get something in writing to say the answer is no. So I just think that's interesting. But thank you for your support and sending.
Yeah, I'll keep.
Can I bring this up? Can we, how come we can't put our own polls up, like, a post for the signs?
That seems.
You know, in the right way, like, between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, if there's a grass area, technically, you can put it where there's a concrete, and you drill a hole in it, core drill the hole in there and put a post in there.
Let's explore all of the existing polls.
I've got enough polls in front of my house.
Before we go, Adam.
Yeah. I'm just talking about a four-by-four post or six-by-six or something. Yes.
Maybe like a gateway kind of thing or?
Yeah.
Something, yeah.
We'll explore our options.
Yeah. This is a suggestion. Why not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's, let's exhaust all possible options there.
Why should we have to ask permission for somebody else if we can do it ourselves?
And I don't want to belabor this topic, which is one final thing that's important to note. Right now, the project is planning to cover the cost of the installation. So just to be, to clarify with Public Works, we're not looking at them to have to absorb a cost of the different attachments and things like that for the banner itself. What they need to iron out, of course, is if it's our polls from a liability standpoint, then we are looking at a requirement for Public Works to do the installation. They were planning to do them on the other polls, and I'm sure Delmarva, Delmarva, I can't talk tonight, Delmarva Power would insist if it was in writing that you don't touch our polls, we'll do it, and then we'll charge you for the time. So I know that needs to be ironed out, but I'll make sure that that's in the email, that these are things that we just need to be mindful of. So, so, thank you.
All right. Holding out hope that First Friday can happen tomorrow. The weather does not look promising, but really hoping there can be a First Friday, 6:00 PM in the town square tomorrow. I think that's all I have. So if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.